Live in five, four.
Well, welcome back and I'd like to, at this point in time, reconvene the meeting. Right before this, if you were following along, we had the budget workshop and then we took a slight recess, so at this point in time, I'd like to reconvene the open session of the May twenty-third, two thousand and twelve session of North Idaho College Board of Trustees Meeting. At this point in time, I'd like everybody to have to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. We have a verification of quorum and I do not see any guests signed up, as far as guests. So, the next item of business is the approval of the minutes. Does everybody have a chance to review the minutes from the previous meeting, from the April eighteenth, two thousand and twelve meeting? And also, there would be the minutes from the April twenty-fourth meeting and the April thirtieth meeting.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the minutes from April eighteenth, twenty-fourth, and thirtieth.
Is there a second?
I second that.
They're moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the three previous meetings in April. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda is public comment and we have two people signed up for public comment. Just covered up, hang on. There we go. First up is Erin Norvell. Come forward, please. Just can't stay away.
(laughing).
The only time I get to be on camera.
Well, we can fix that.
Chairman Armin, board members, Dr. Bell, and guests. I'm here this evening to speak to you about the staff sabbatical policy. North Idaho College is an institution of higher education. Every day, we encourage, nurture, and drive our students to do the best in the attainment of their own education and development. As an organization, we have a responsibility to do no less for our employees. But it's not only for employee good that we should be encouraging their ongoing education and development, more importantly, it's for the good of the college. The staff sabbatical policy is not only about staff development, it's about staff learning experiences and growth which foster innovation and ingenuity. It is important to recognize that educating students doesn't happen only in our classrooms. Staff members at NIC play a vital role in helping students to learn and enabling and facilitating an environment that favors learning. Innovation and ingenuity are necessary components of creating, administering, and growing programs and services that our students and communities have come to depend on NIC to provide. Though NIC staff members are some of the most adept professionals you will find, often we are stuck in a mode of interrupted innovation. We have a great idea, but little fires pop up that need to be put out and we spend most of our time just keeping our heads above water. The result is that great ideas simply remain ideas. Innovation is stunted, ingenuity is frustrated, and the status quo lives to see another day. Providing sabbatical time to staff members to step out of their day-to-day work, away from the fires, to focus on learning experiences and program creation will come back to the college in huge returns, such as more efficient and effective student programs that positively impact retention, completion, and the overall student experience. The staff sabbatical policy is a recognition of the vital role our staff members play in the success and progress of North Idaho College. There are many staff assembly members here tonight in show of their support of this policy, many more who couldn't make it, the end of the workday and they would have to return, but on their behalf, I ask you to please pass the staff sabbatical policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Second up for public comment is Bob Murray.
I'd like to take this opportunity to deliver to the board members a small gift from Kathy Lewis. Kathy Lewis is our one and only full-time faculty member in the American Indian Studies Program. She can't be here tonight, although she really wanted to be, but family commitments took her away. Kathy learned very early on to set goals. She also learned that people and institutions intentionally and unintentionally can put obstacles in the way. She also learned that family can help you achieve these goals. Kathy started off by earning an associate degree, then a bachelor's degree, then a master's degree, and then she decided to become a teacher to help others reach their goals. Four years ago, NIC hired Kathy as our first instructor of our newly-created American Indian Studies Program. She's worked very hard to establish herself on this campus with faculty, with staff, with students, and with advisors. She's also fostered great friendships with the members of the Coeur d'Alene Tribe. Last month, you paid her a great honor. You gave her tenure starting this fall. She's pledged herself to help others, understand the cultures of Native Americans, understand the importance of a college education, understand the importance of a supporting family, understand the importance of setting goals, and overcoming obstacles. She also understands the importance of saying thank you to all of those who have helped her achieve her goals. In the bags you've got in front of you, she's given you a collection of aromatic herbs. The first one is sweetgrass, Herol Chloe Odera, silver or white sage, Salvia Argentinia, combined with Thuya Placeta or Western Red Cedar. Each of these herbs is very important to Native Americans in cleansing the spirit, initiating calm and peace as one communicates with their Creator. If Kathy were here tonight, she would say thank you for allowing her to achieve her goals and for giving others to achieve their goals through a chance for education. Her mother helped collect this material for you and the last question her mother asked her the other night was, "How will the board members know what these things are?" And so, she's written a letter to each of you and the letter closes by saying your assignment is to identify the specimens and to find out what they are or what they do. I sort of chuckled with her and she looked right into my eye and said, "Don't forget, there is a botanist on campus who can help." She was looking at me. So, anyway, enjoy your aromatic herbs, they smell very good, and Kathy will be returning to the board meetings in August and tenure meant a lot to her and a lot to her family kind of thing. So, thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Mr. Chair, so can we, I didn't look, can we look?
You have to answer the question now, Bob.
Yes, Bob, come back up.
(laughing).
You've got the sweetgrass, the greatest sweetgrass.
Greatest sweetgrass? How cool is that?
And smells a lot.
This is the one that gives us peace and calm during board meetings?
Yes.
Oh, I'm putting this on. This is so neat.
The best smelling one is the white or the silver sage combined with Western Red Cedar.
Oh, that's wonderful. Well, how kind of her. That's really nice.
Thank you very much. Next up is celebrating success. Now, this should be an interesting celebrating success. It's the NIC Challenge Course, Jessica Johnson-Johansson.
While Jessica comes to the podium, might I just say a word about this? I really wanted us to do this celebrating success outdoors. I had hoped that the board members would have the opportunity to experience firsthand the challenge course and the zip line.
Well, this is an invitation for it right here, so.
Yeah, but, you know, maybe we can still get them out there one of these days, Jessica.
I'm all for it, let's go for it.
(inaudible).
Well, my name is Jess Johansson, I am the coordinator of the NIC Challenge Course and I want to thank you all so much for inviting me down here tonight to talk about my program. This is something I'm very passionate about, probably because I've been part of this project since day one. In two thousand and eight, we built the first portion of the course under the Student Activities Department with the support of ASNC and the NIC Foundation. Since then, we were able to do two self-funded expansions, one in two thousand and ten and another in two thousand and eleven. Looking at the development that this program has had in the last four years is really exciting and it makes me look really forward to the future of the program and its impact on NIC students and staff and faculty, the greater community, and maybe even you guys if I can get you up on the course, so. With that said, I'm going to play a short video for you, it'll give you an idea of what the NIC Challenge Course is all about, so. Hey, guys, my name is Jess Johansson, I'm the coordinator of the NIC Challenge Course. We have a variety of team-building tools that we use in the NIC Challenge Course on the ground where we do team-building activities, where they can build trust and communication and kind of work on their team dynamics. Groups come to the NIC Challenge Course with different objectives. Every team is facing their own issues and has different things that they're looking to improve upon. So, part of the process of attending the NIC Challenge Course goes through kind of an interview process with me, so I can get to know what the group is about, what their objectives are, and then I design a program to meet those particular objectives. So, sometimes that would include leadership development, or conflict resolution, or communication We have a few different portions of the High Ropes Course, three different elements that are run on a team belay system, which means one person is climbing when the rest of the team is on the ground holding the ropes that are belaying their team members, so there's definitely a lot of trust and communication that's needed to do that safely. We're open to everybody, I've worked with a lot of groups on campus here, a lot of the student leadership groups such as the orientation leaders and the student government and the admissions ambassadors, the sports teams. I've also worked with the instructors. I also work with off-campus groups, so we've had groups come in from local schools, different mentor programs from local high schools, different groups of elementary and middle school students. We've also had businesses from the community utilize the course, such as doctors' offices and dentist's offices, different corporate groups. We've had the National Guard here, we've had, just last week, we had the Idaho Department of Lands come through and do a full-day program where we did team-building elements on the ground and then they did the whole, the full High Ropes Course as well. For on-campus groups, the rates are very reasonable, I'm trying to make it available to as many students as possible, students, staff, and faculty because it's such a powerful tool to develop leadership and communication, things that are really important in the growth of schools. It's a smaller fee for on-campus groups and then the fees vary depending on the package Thanks for visiting the NIC Challenge Course. Do you guys have any questions for me?
I do, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Kristy.
Jessica, I had the privilege of going through something very similar called SportsMind.
Great.
The city paid for every single employee in the nineties to go through it for that team-building that you mentioned, and so, I'm curious for, is there a place on the website where we can look at fees for off-campus groups?
Yes, nic.edu/challengecourse.
Challenge course, okay.
You can find all of the rates there.
And then, oh, I had one more question, what was it? Oh, I've forgotten. Old age.
You can give me a call if you're interested in getting up on the course.
Oh, I know what it is.[848.12][848.12](laughing). See how quickly it comes back? The video, is that on the website?
It's not, it was just done, actually Andy made the video for us this week, so.
Okay, is it a possibility that we'll get there?
I think so, yes, absolutely.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions for Jessica?
Just a comment, Chairman Armin. Jessica is more than willing and eager, in fact, to take the board through a team-building and a trust-building exercise, you know, on the high, you know, the high steps, way up at the treetops, you know.
Absolutely. Our leap of faith, forty-five-foot platform?
Love it.
Does insurance go along with this?
Pardon me?
Medical insurance.
Nick, I'll catch you when you fall back, trust me.
Trust you, I've heard that before. Any other questions for Jessica?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you very much for having me, I appreciate it.
Good luck with your program.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Armin, the board members, and Dr. Bell. Just want to give you a quick update of where we are on the construction project with K-Tech. Good timing, we had a board meeting today out there and actually took our board on the first tour through the facility. For the most part, we're dried in, short of some skylights that are scheduled to go in later this week, and so, at that point, we'll be pretty much completely dried in. We have sheet rock going up and we're making progress towards the twenty-seventh of August, which is slated as our grand opening, and I would like to invite you out for that. While I'm on that note, I would like to extend the opportunity for the board here to come out and go on a tour, if you'll just let me know when. Typically, Wednesdays and Fridays are the best times for me. At this point, I'm out there about every day, so if, you know, if you want to come out for an individual tour, I'd be glad to do that, but if you would like to tour it as a board, we can walk through and look at programs. Mike Myers and Doug Anderson were out today and toured and got a chance to walk through and look at the facility, very pleased with it, and so, I think there's some opportunities for us to work together in evening shifts and whatnot, so, very pleased with that. As far as the other, the next phase here, we just completed the hiring of all our instructors, just finished that up today, hired the last four. We have, I think I've got right at ten employees or instructors on campus, a total staff of about fourteen, so. With that, Chairman, I will stand for any questions you have of me.
Any questions for Mark?
Mark, I think I heard you say that ten to fourteen instructors is what you now have, and I think last time when you talked to us, the enrollment was much more than you expected, that you had expanded the times you were offering classes, essentially two shifts? Three?
Three, three shifts.
Better yet, and so, I'm thinking about then, the number of folks that you'll be serving, you expect to be what number?
Our target's five hundred. We had nine hundred and fifty applicants.
Right.
And with, by doubling up some shifts and then adding the third section, we can accommodate five hundred. That's actually, you'll hear me use different numbers, on-campus, that is four hundred and eighty, and that, I can tell you the breakdown of that, in fact, it's a hundred, make sure I get my math right, a hundred and forty in the morning section, a hundred and forty in the afternoon section, to get us up to two eighty. Third section, am I doing that right? Yep, and then, third section, we have about a hundred on-campus with that, and we have some off-campus like at the resort, so.
Off-campus being that programs are delivered off-campus?
Right, and primarily, that is the resort management program, which we are utilizing space at the Coeur d'Alene Inn and the Coeur d'Alene Resort.
So, if we continue with the math, that five hundred students, most of them are and ten instructors, is that about fifty per instructor?
Well, the way that breaks down is per instructor, there's twenty students per instructor per section. So, if you look at the welding program, which there's only one welding instructor, there's twenty students in the morning, twenty in the afternoon, and then twenty in the evening shift, so you'll see sixty students over the course of the day. Programs like nursing, there's two sections of those going on at any one time, so there's actually forty students in the morning, forty in the afternoon, and then a twenty in the evening course.
You're feeling like you have then, you're able to deliver all that's possible now in this first fall session, because you've had more folks apply than you could handle?
We're going to do the best we can with that, and I did actually just run those numbers in my head, it's a hundred and ninety per section. It isn't adding up, but yeah, we had a hundred and ninety in the morning, a hundred and ninety in the afternoon, and a hundred in the third section, so.
At least what we've learned here is sometimes folks sign up but don't actually, aren't actually able to come, so you have some shrinkage room in there?
Well, yes, and actually, when you look at the nine hundred and fifty that applied, you know, those are students that expressed interest, and so, they filled out an application, gone through a screening process. Some portion of those, due to their schedules or maybe behind on credits, may not be able to attend, and then, you know, as we then take those students and start working through a typical course schedule at their home high school, sometimes that shifts them a little bit. But we do have commitment on five hundred at this point and we have students on a waiting list, so I think we'll be completely full in the fall, so.
Great.
Pretty exciting opportunity for us, and I realized the other night that as we've got an orientation plan for the twenty-eighth, and we're actually going to have to do that in three shifts because I can't get all five hundred students in one room at one time, so.
Any other questions? Ken?
What I'd like to do is come out and visit your facility and probably ask you these questions, but my curiosity is killing me right now, so, could you just kind of give me a thumbnail sketch about when you say a morning session and an afternoon session, what does that involve and maybe as part of that, what do you expect the students to walk out the door with by way of skills?
Okay, the number one, the number one goal of a regional technology center like this is that students, when they walk out the door, they have skill sets where they're employable. Now, again, being at this for, this will be my twenty-fifth year, I can tell you that it's pretty accurate every year to forecast that about fifty-one percent of your students will go directly to work. They all graduate with skill sets where they can go to work. An example of that would be the students that go through the nursing program will come out with a CNA. Certainly, they have skills and certifications where they can go to work. Students that come through our welding program will have one or two AWS certifications which qualifies them to go to work. But I know that about forty-nine percent of our students annually go directly on for post-secondary education. They're in a situation where they can, or have the ability to do that. Fifty-one percent of them go right to work, and again, as I've said often, those numbers are somewhat skewed, they're not totally accurate because the students that, fifty-one percent that go directly to work, many of those are going to post-secondary, come to NIC in the evening for, you know, working their way through college. Many of those that are coming directly to college are working their way through college at part-time jobs in the evening, so I think that's a win-win either way, but first and foremost, we make sure that they have skill sets where they can feed themselves. What I've learned about students over the years, and, you know, our own children are no different, is that, you know, we set high goals and, you know, then life happens. And so, if a student, our oldest son, for example, started out to be a doctor and that was his goal, and made it three years through college over in Montana and met a blond-haired girl, and life happened, and never finished that bachelor's degree. Luckily, he did obtain some skill sets through a vocational program at his high school. He was a valedictorian. Many times you hear me mention valedictorians, he was a valedictorian of his high school and has, since that time, fed his family very well, has three little children, and on the skill sets that he learned while he was in high school, so. Anyway, I certainly encourage all students to go on. I do challenge them, yes, and again, I hope this is the right venue to say this, but many times that I, when we talk to students about going on to college, I'm afraid that in, at the high school level, we've gotten away from talking to students about careers and we talk to them about bachelor's degrees. And I hope that we can back up and focus more on careers and then determine what the college degrees that they need to complete that goal, and then when they get to college, the graduation rate of those students is much higher, success rate's much higher. I'm afraid sometimes our high school students are hearing, "Go get a bachelor's degree and then find a job." I like to talk to students about, "What are you going to do when you get that bachelor's degree, and what's your goal?"
Thank you. Trudy.
Mark, following up then on the description you say of most of them are the forty-one percent, fifty-one percent, forty-one percent probably going on to, directly on to something more, it means we're next in line, right?
Absolutely.
Like to be, and so, as you think that through, that's likely to be one year for some of those folks, two years, nine months? When do we need to be ready to have forty-one percent of your students come here?
Chairman and board member Meyer, I would say that we're going to encourage all of our students, as many as they can, to come right on to NIC. Mike Myers and I are working on that every time we meet, trying to align our curriculum. I met with your diesel instructors last week and we talked about that, further how we align that curriculum, encourage students to come on, because whether that student is coming on as a full-time student to complete that degree, or, you know, whether they're coming at night, you know, this is just Mark's philosophy. If you hear me talk to your son or daughter, grandchild, this is what I say. Those that are intending to go on and get a bachelor's degree, I'm a huge fan of community and junior colleges. Get it two years at a time, and if we've done a good job in education of aligning our curriculum from the tech center to NIC, from NIC to U of I or ISU, then there shouldn't be, there shouldn't be much lost credits, and every step along the way, they've gained some skill sets and some opportunities where they can go right to work. Because again, just like, actually, three of our, my wife and I have four children and three of those went that route, they were headed towards a bachelor's degree. Two of those started out in a junior college, completing associate degree, got married, went to work, and have earned their living solely on that. Our oldest son, I'll be honest with you, I wish that we'd steered him through a junior college first, because then after two years at least, you have a document, you have some credentials, you have certifications, and so, I think that should be a seamless system of education, so, that's Mark's opinion for what it's worth.
Mr. Chair, well, we certainly agree with that, and we believe that NIC is the appropriate place for a career and for transfer to higher education, so, we're all on the same page here, Mark. I had a question about your board meetings, are they, they're not televised, are they?
They are not televised, they are public meetings, they're open to the public, you're welcome to come in at any time. If you'd come today, we met in the job trailer, it was a little tight in there today, so.
That was my question, Mark. You have so many different, I guess, partnerships. We have NIC, we have School District Two Seventy-One, it's a little difficult for this setup to just appear magically, but District Two Seventy-One has, as you know, a set boardroom meeting and the ability to televise, so I was curious if your boards had any conversation about utilizing maybe their services?
We haven't as yet, we may eventually have that capability out on the K-Tech campus. I would say that the next, you know, the next four or five monthly board meetings are probably going to be out on-site, just as our boards reviewing the construction process and working through that, so, I don't foresee us being televised, at least until we open school, because of just the necessity to be out there and be involved with that. And I'd encourage any of you that want to attend those, you're more than welcome to. I would like, if there was some way we could organize a tour for any of you that can come out, I'd be glad to do it one at a time, but if you want to come out as a group, look at this facility and, you know, we're, we can talk about cost per square foot, so as you're looking at possibly, you know, doing something with your professional technical programs in the future, maybe we can, you know, discuss what we've learned through this process, so.
Well, I would certainly encourage our board to go as a group, and so, maybe we could put that on our agenda to talk about later and try to get back to you.
Mark, what's the makeup of your five hundred students? Are they fifty percent juniors and fifty percent seniors, or is there a difference going there?
That, Chairman Armin, that's an interesting question, and ideally, you would have half of them as juniors and half of them as seniors, so, we've kind of, after the first year, you've kind of got a bottleneck for new entries coming in. So, if we take five hundred this year and if they were, you know, if they were all, or let's say they're half, half of them are seniors, those seniors are going to graduate. Now, they won't have completed the complete program, but they'll have gained some skill sets, some college credits, and certainly, those students especially will be headed those students, uh, especially will be headed on to NIC to complete certifications because they're only halfway through. Uh, so that means then that I'd have two hundred and fifty students that would move in to be seniors, and I only have two hundred and fifty new openings next year. Uh, as far as how it breaks out, it's not exactly that smooth. And it depends on program area. Um, it's a mixture of both. I don't have it, uh, broken down by program area, but ideally you try to shoot for fifty-fifty.
Any other questions for Mark? Mark, thank you very much.
Just to endorse the tour idea, let's put on.
Absolutely. Appreciate it.
Thank you for having me come speak.
Constituent reports. Obviously, school is out, so that we do not have an ASNEX, ASNEX, uh, report tonight. But we do have a staff assembly. Your, your, your first shot at it, Gary.
This is my second shot, actually.
I know, but it's your first official one.
Yeah, first official.
We've filled in before.
Well, thank you, uh, Chairman Arman, board members, Dr. Bell, and of course, Mark up there. Um, we, uh, the staff assembly report, we met on May tenth, and we had a great turnout. We, uh, had pizza. We celebrated all twenty-two nominees for the annual staff appreciation awards, and I would like to recognize the three winners. This year, the Rising Star Award winner was Jimmy O'Hara from the e-learning department. Uh, the Staff Excellence Award winner was Susie Dean from our Human Resources Department. The Outstanding Service to the College Community Award went to Linda Michael, our Dean of Students. So, uh, that was great, and we'd like to also thank the foundation for their support for those, uh, staff appreciation awards. So. Very, very good, well-deserving too. Our, um, executive committee, uh, the new officers this year, the chair is, uh, me this year, and the vice chair is a great friend, Nancy Edwards. Secretary again is Karen Jo- or Carol Jones, I'm sorry. Uh, the senators are, at this time, Karen Hubbard, but she's going to be moving on, so we'll have to refill that. Bill McKelver, Betsy Connery, Sandra Jaco, Chantel Black, John Totten, Matt Sebby, and Adam Mortensen. Our senate alternates are Stacy Hudson and Leslie Slinkard. Uh, we had a guest that came. It was, uh, Dr. Perez. And, uh, he came there to tell him, tell us that he was going to be overtaken also the student, um, services area. But he also did tell us a good story. He, uh, he told us about how he had heard about NIC and what a great place it was and the environment. But once he got here, he really felt how, uh, the faculty cares about the students and their mission and this, and the staff. And it was really energizing to hear him say that. So it was great having you there. Uh, finally, the staff sabbatical policy is on your agenda tonight. And, uh, Aaron talked about it earlier, and Alex will be talking about it later. But on behalf of the staff assembly, this policy is a very important step in supporting professional development of the staff members at NIC. We are constantly being asked to be better, stronger, and more constructive in our jobs. This policy will afford staff members the time to become all of those things, and will bring a positive impact to the programs and services we offer our students and the community. So we would ask that the board approve this policy. So. Are there any questions?
Questions for Gary. Seeing none. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Faculty Assembly, Kathy O'Brien.
Chairman Arman, Board of Trustees, Dr. Bell, and honored guests, thanks for giving me the opportunity to report today. I told you last, um, month during my report that I would bring the new Faculty Assembly Chair here and introduce you to him or her, and I'm doing just that. You're looking at her. I had the dubious honor of being re-elected for another year Faculty Assembly Chair, so I'm honored to serve. And our officers that were elected are May tenth meeting. In addition to myself are Christine Edmondson, who will serve again as vice chair, Laura Templeman, who will serve again as secretary, and Gerard Mathis, who will serve again as treasurer. In addition, at our May tenth meeting, we elected new faculty senators. And those are Pat Lippert, Christina Clausen, and Audrey Cameron are the new faculty senators for next school year. And they will join Audrey Bourne, Carl Curtis, Ann Johnston, Michelle Lippert, and Karen Rupel. The two alternates that we elected were John Clausen and John Trumbull. Uh, we had a busy May, as you know, getting students graduated, and graduation is always a great day. And that morning, there were many, many faculty members, uh, recognized for their length of service awards, which was really fun. Um, and in addition, we had three of our wonderful faculty members recognized for their fa- for their achievements, uh, Bob Bennett, John Clausen, and Dave McCray. So that was a very, very nice, um, morning. Uh, we got grades done, hopefully. Got all those final exams, uh, administered and graded. And, uh, I, I often, um, sort of chuckle, laugh, and a little bit groan when people say to me, "Well, you have your summer off, right?" I don't know very many teachers that actually have their summers off. That's a, a misconception that's widely spread. Uh, so we will be this summer updating all of our courses to the new Blackboard system. And as well as many of us will be, uh, teaching summer school and serving on the several hiring committees that will be happening over the summer. So we'll be busy. Uh, and I think that's all I have. Our next meeting is, uh, next Faculty Assembly meeting is not until September thirteenth at noon. Uh, so we'll, um, see what happens then, and I will be glad to entertain any questions.
Any questions for Kathy? Kathy, I, I have one question for you, and possibly for Gary also. Do you have any problem, I mean, particularly looking at faculty, with as many adjunct faculties we have, do you have much of a problem with participation? Um, or, you know, is that, is it pretty widespread?
Well, you know, it's, it's, it's interesting. Um, you know, with adjunct, it's, it's difficult because many of, many of our adjunct faculty members, they're working full-time somewhere else. They may teach one class. They may be on, on campus only evenings or, and some of them really are only teaching maybe online, so they aren't on campus. So we tr- we try to allow our, our adjunct faculty to teach and, and not have too many, uh, more expectations, unless they would like to. We're always, of course, open. But, um, our full-time faculty members all are, uh, part, uh, part of their contractual obligation is to serve on at least one committee. And one of my jobs as Faculty Assembly Chair at the beginning of the year is to make sure that everybody is assigned to committees and to make sure that, um, that it, it's equitable and that, and that people are serving. Um, you know, I think the, the difficulty sometimes comes when we have, uh, faculty members at outreach centers, or, for example, our nursing faculty, sometimes it's very difficult for them because they, uh, much of their obligation might be at, at practicums at the hospital. So you really have to take into consideration everybody's, uh, responsibilities and try to balance that. Uh, but I think, I think we do fairly well, you know? I'd always like more. But, um, uh, I think we have a very involved campus, um, in all. One of the things I would like to see, uh, I don't know how we would put this into, uh, practice, but I think it would be nice at some point to, and we have all these standing committees that are going on. It would be nice to have some place to have a report of what's going on with those committees. Because oftentimes I don't know that, um, everybody knows what's happening in all of the different committees. So some sort of process, I mean, I, I report, uh, Faculty Assembly, obviously. But, you know, what's going on with the commencement committee? What's going on with the, um, the wellness committee? What's going on with the diversity committee? I think it would be really nice, uh, nice communication for the rest of the faculty, and I'm sure staff as well, to, uh, to know what's going on. So that might be something that we might want to look at, um, just putting into place so it's even as, as the board, that you understand, um, all the things that are going on on campus with all the various committees and the faculty that are involved.
That's a great idea. My concern was is that, you know, just being spread too thin. I understand that you all contractually have to have committee assignments, but when you have fewer instructors or fewer faculty, uh, that are full-time faculty, it really does start to become a thinner pool to draw from.
And, and it becomes an issue too, as, you know, especially with the last couple of years that we've seen the, uh, enrollment increase. Many faculty members have taken on, uh, overloads. So when you're taking on more of a teaching load, I mean, frankly, something's got to give. And our number one, um, consideration is always going to be our students. So we're going to do what it takes to make sure our students are okay, and then, um, you know, the rest of it. So yes, there, there is that consideration, absolutely, you know? And I think we do a great job, but you do sometimes worry about that.
Gary, I mean, obviously you don't have adjunct staff. Good thing. Um, at least we don't want to start that. But do you ever have much of a problem getting participation on staff side?
No, uh, we, we really don't. I mean, from my department, I know, I'm new to this. And when I got involved, it, it just seems like there's new people coming in all the time. So I haven't seen a drop-off at all. It's, seems like one big happy family.
Good. Love to hear that. Any other questions for Kathy? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Senate, Joe Jacoby.
Chair Arman, board, President Bell, guests. Um, well, first I wanted to let you know how enthusiastic the Senate was to get the staff sabbatical policy. Uh, something that we were realizing just in the last few years, at least as some of the faculty were, that how highly specialized and how, uh, the professional nature of so many of the staff positions on campus in a college campus anymore, there's a high level of training and skill. Uh, so there are some of those obvious things. But I think our staff, from top to bottom, uh, and bottom isn't necessarily the right word. I think everybody works, uh, to make sure that the students have everything they need, from, uh, the people who are in the various offices around campus, to the people who are in the buildings, facilities, management, uh, to our custodial staff. It is such an honor and source of pride to walk into a classroom and know that everybody on campus is doing everything they can to serve the students that attend this school. So, uh, those staff sabbaticals will really enhance the training opportunities. And I can assure you, with the quality of people we have on this campus, they will be used well and for the institution's good. So we were very excited to see that policy come through and come to you. We, uh, have, uh, we, we did pass for a second reading, the tuition waivers being transferred to the auspices of the Human Resources Office, and the professional contracts were passed for a second reading. Uh, so things went very smoothly there. And, uh, I would like to also take a moment to thank Dr. Bell on behalf of the Senate for your years of service to North Idaho College, uh, for the staff, for the faculty, uh, and for the students, because the things that you have done have, uh, have really enhanced our experience and that feel, that, that certainly affects the students and their experience. And on a personal note, you've been very helpful moving policies through and letting me know you've oftentimes laid your cards on the table, which is not the best position for a negotiator, but it's always because you have the needs of the students in mind. So rather than your own personal agenda, uh, again, your agenda is about the students. So thank you very much for your years of service.
Thank you, Joe.
Very welcome. And I'd like to introduce, is he still here? John Totten, who is our Senate Chair for the twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen year. Uh, his ties aren't nearly as fun as mine, but.
Hard to beat.
But I'm excited for John to take over. He's going to do an excellent, excellent job. So I, I think you'll, you'll very much enjoy him. So thank you, John, for being willing to take on that responsibility. So, uh, I believe, so yeah, John will be our, our, our chair. Audrey Bourne, a speech and communications instructor, will be our vice chair. Michelle Lippert will be our corresponding secretary. Chantel Black will be our parliamentarian. So, uh, our, our executive committee is going to be in excellent hands. Would you, did you have any questions?
Any questions for Joe?
Just a statement. Mr. Chair, it's been a pleasure, Joe, working with you. I sure hope that we get to see you around campus as much as we've got to see you in these board meetings. It's been a pleasure.
Johnny, you got some big shoes to fill there, Joe's.
Actually, actually, I have to speak for Gary too. I mean, Aaron's been pretty tough to fill, follow too, you know, so.
Mr. Chair.
Transition's a tough time.
So do you, Kathy. So do you.
You have to wait, Kathy. You're not going anywhere. Sorry.
Um, I'd like to take just a second to, and I don't know if Aaron is still in the room or not, um, but, uh, I've had the pleasure over this last year of working with Joe and Kathy and Aaron and, and Chloe, uh, earlier. And, um, it's been a terrific, for me, it's just been a terrific experience to work with these, these, uh, faculty and staff who give their all to North Idaho College, to our students, and, and always, uh, which is something I've, I so appreciate, think first about student success and what's right for the students rather than about what's in it for my group or in it for me. And we've had a good time. We have had fun. And I appreciate that. We've had some very wide-ranging discussions. We rarely just tackle the one agenda item and say goodbye. We get into some good discussions, and I, I hope that that will continue next year with the new president. It's, it's been a privilege for me to work with y'all, so I want to thank you.
Any other questions? Joe, appreciate your time and your service. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. It's been a pleasure.
Aaron, also, thank you for your time and service, even though you didn't have to make the report. You gave Gary the odd option, so. Okay, moving along to executive reports. Vice President of Resource Management's Ron Dorn. So now, is Mark giving you the two-minute warning here, or? Jim gets four minutes because he's got two hats to wear now.
Board chair, board members, I'd like to update you on, on a project that I'm pretty excited about, and that's the, uh, the, uh, move of our, our Ponderay Center to downtown Sandpoint. And I, I know yesterday you got a copy of the, uh, the lease, and, uh, just to let you know that I, I'm really excited about this project. I know we reviewed that lease. I think it's going to be a, a good, uh, a good move for our Sandpoint Outreach Center. The community of Sandpoint is excited, and, uh, Dr. Bell and I will be going up there tomorrow to, uh, sign the lease and sign the MOU with the Economic Development Corporation to get forty thousand dollars a year for four years to offset the, uh, cost of the lease and give NIC an opportunity to build their programs up there. It gives us access to downtown. It gives us, uh, access to facilities that aren't currently available to us, a gym, a commercial kitchen, a theater, auditorium with a theater in it. And, uh, again, I just think it'll be a really good, a, a, a really good situation for, for NIC. The, uh, the lease will run for, uh, one-year, uh, one-year term for a, a total of five years. There's, uh, as, as I've come want to do so I don't get in trouble, I put a non-appropriation clause in the lease so you all can get me out of it if I, if, uh, it turns out not to be what we thought it is. Uh, a very minimal, uh, upfront cost, uh, on, on NIC's part to, to remodel the facility. And, uh, I'm hoping, and I think we're still on time, uh, with signing, the, the lease will be effective July one. And, um, hoping, um, we'll have the facility ready for classes to, uh, begin in, in our fall term in August. Uh, we are increasing it. We're getting about fifteen hundred more, uh, square feet than we have now. And it gives us an opportunity to move our office of the area office on aging that's in another location into that facility with us, and that facility is right across the street from our Head Start program. So we've really got a consolidation of, uh, the three different programs we have up in, in nor- far northern Idaho, uh, into one location. So I think, I think there'll be some synergies there for us. I just wanted to update you on that, on that process with the lease. Are there any questions?
Questions for Ron?
Just a quick one. Um, Ron, that is exciting news. We know that our outreach centers do so much for those in the, the northern part of the counties. Um, I was curious, is there any kind of recruitment going on since we will have maybe additional space and down the road, hopefully additional program offerings? Is there, maybe that question's for, uh, over here. But I was just curious about recruitment.
I, I think minimally for, for us. I know Mark is planning, uh, an open house, I think just before school starts is in the fall. But we'll have the, the, uh, what is it called? The Bonner Carney Bee. The newspaper will be there tomorrow, uh, for the signing of that. So that, we'll get an article in the paper for that. And then, uh, it's a public meeting, uh, where the MOU is signed with the Economic Development Corporation to receive our money. That, that's one adj- That's a one agenda item for them. So, I assume that there'll be media at both of those events tomorrow, so it's a start.
Great. Thank you.
No further questions? Thank you, Ron. Next up, we have Vice President of Instruction and Student Services, and what else names do you want after your? Jim Perez.
Mr. Chair, members of the Board. I bring you this evening a rather brief report, but I think one that is reflective of some of the good quality work that is being done here at North Idaho College, and certainly one of the reasons why I'm enjoying my stay here. Item one is a new program that will soon become part of our academic offerings, and it's a business entrepreneurship program that is kind of the brainchild of Avista. Avista came to us a couple of weeks ago and basically made us an offer we couldn't refuse. They have been working with Spokane Community College, you know, that little school across the... And evidently, SEC has a nationally acclaimed program, a curriculum, in this entrepreneurship program. And what Avista wants to do is bring this program to four community colleges in the region. It would include Spokane, North Idaho College, Rogue Community College in Medford, Oregon, and also Walla Walla Community College. And the idea is to train businesspeople in the development and maintenance of small businesses. It is their idea that this is something that's going to help with the, as a matter of fact, the quote that they have is that "One of the best strategies we're pulling out of the longest, deepest recession of our time is to enable broad-based innovation and entrepreneurship." And also, who better to partner to do this than with area community colleges? So, what Avista is doing is they're giving each of the colleges $100,000 over three years as startup to begin the, to offset the initial cost of this program. And also, Avista will create a micro-enterprise loan fund for students who successfully complete the program and create new businesses. So, SEC has been doing this since 2007, and next month, they're going to graduate their fifth cohort, and they have had a steady enrollment of 25 to 30 students per cohort. So, we're looking to begin this program in 2013, and we're pretty excited about that opportunity to partner not only with Avista, but with the other community colleges in the area. Item two also speaks of a new program that is coming down the road, and this is a result of a significant amount of work by some individuals who wrote a grant for aerospace industries. That grant was just submitted today, I believe, and it is to the tune of $2,976,663. That, this program hopes to serve 300 to 400 jobs that are rejected in the local aerospace industry in areas such as composites, aviation maintenance, non-destructive testing, and machining. And the program will be offered as an open-entry, exit, delivery with a major component online. And there were several people who were instrumental in writing this, but I think the key players are Sarah Flatlin, Marie Price, and Mike Myers, and I would just like to salute the three of them for the countless evening and weekend hours that they put in to writing this grant, a tremendous amount of work. But every indication is that we're going to be successful in receiving this funding. That's exciting news. And finally, I just wanted to compliment all of those who are responsible for this great commencement we just had. I've been in higher education long enough to understand that this is one of the greatest celebrations we can have every year, when we congratulate our students, we still the degrees, the certificates to them for the accomplishments of having reached their academic goals. And I have also participated in many commencements, but I was very, very impressed with the ceremony that was here recently. It just went off like clockwork. The students were excited, families. And afterwards, I was walking by the reception area, just heading back to my office, and three different sets of parents, I don't, they just grabbed me and said they needed to tell somebody a wonderful experience their son and daughter had had here during their time. And I was glad to listen to them. Usually, you hear the other side, but it was very nice to do that. So, for all the people that were responsible for putting this together, I just want to say thank you. It was just a wonderful ceremony. So, that concludes my report, unless there's some questions.
Questions for Jim. Ken.
Jim, do you have some expectation of when we might hear on the aerospace grant application?
I believe it would be next fall, in October, maybe.
Yeah, but when we would, my understanding was that you just submitted the application, so we have to hear whether or not the application is going to be awarded.
It will be in the fall. It will be, should here in September if we got the award.
Okay. So, sometime in September, then?
Ken and I were just thinking out loud when your first program, first topic about entrepreneur program, we were trying to recall, do we have a small business program currently on campus?
Yes. We have an incubator program.
It's at the Workforce Training Center.
It is for already established small businesses, and it's to, it's Bill Jones' program.
You've heard him speak of it often, and he gets accolades in the press and in the community quite frequently for the good work that he has done in keeping jobs. But his program is focused on established small businesses and helping them to remain in business and expand and be successful. This will feed into that, but as I understand it from our discussion last week, this program is focused on individuals who want to start up
Yes.
a new small business. So, they'll really complement each other very, very well.
It'll be a requirement for the students who are coming into this program to have an idea, have an entrepreneurship idea, and then build on that.
Interesting dialogue in that we are involved in some of those kinds of startup businesses. And it's, was described one time as those who start the businesses are like the pioneers who came out and discovered the area, but those who run the business are a whole different character, skills, and trade skills needed to keep it going. And so, they are complementary, and also, I think it will help people understand the difference between the great idea you have and then having the day-to-day operations of a business can be very different.
Any other questions for Jim?
One final note, I am looking forward to crossing over to the Student Services side and promise this will be twice the fun. I'm sure it will be.
Vice President of Community Relations and Marketing, Mark Browning.
Blow my notes up big enough so I can see them here. Chairman Arman, members of the Board, and folks who are hanging with us, thanks for hanging with us. I just wanted to echo the sentiments on commencement. It was my first one here, and I particularly wanted to point out Justin Van Eaton, who is in charge of our operations over at Boswell Schuler. Justin's crew pulls that off from the infrastructure side and from the operational side, and as you see, they have that thing timed down literally to the second. And it is an operation that's military, almost in scope, in terms of, you know, marching people around, putting them in the right spot, and getting them where they need to be, and they do it with great precision and great class, and it was really, really well done. And I wanted to publicly acknowledge Justin and his staff for that.
Bagpipes really help.
You know, the bagpipes are a very nice touch. I think they're, it's really, it's very cool. I just really...
You haven't been here in the summer when you practice.
Other aspect to it.
My mother's maiden name is Fitzgerald, so she has some Scott in our family name, and anyway.
But you don't pay the bagpipes, do you?
No, no. Speaking of staff and accolades, I'd like to just publicly thank my staff again. They are in the final steps of getting the catalog done, which is one of our biggest projects of the year. They've done this in terms of timeline, when it's the least opportune to tackle a project like that. As I look at my notes every month, every month I report to you that they just do things without missing a step, and they are running at full throttle. And through very gentle supplements of donuts and caffeine and some things, which they provide to each other, they get the jobs done. And it's, I just couldn't be prouder. They are just exceptional folks who are just doing unbelievable work that, they're in the back room, literally on top, you know, in terms of workspace, and they just go, 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 go. And every day, it's just nothing but excellence that comes out of the door. So, I just, I'm very, very proud of them. Their next big project is the Career Focus magazine that will show up in every mail address in the five-county region, so you can get an idea of what a large project that is. So, we've talked a little bit about fall enrollment through the workshop. We have a marketing effort that will be rolling out in late June, early July, that it will be aimed to help with fall enrollment. Fall mentioned as well in Sandpoint, that we've taken the approach, we want to do a two-for-one in Sandpoint. We have essentially a soft launch tomorrow with the signing of the lease, and then we'll come back with a larger event that we'd like to have as many of you, if not all of you, participate in, if it's possible, in the fall, where we do a more formal grand opening and a welcome, and we open our doors to downtown, and they welcome us in as well. I think we'll get two-for-one that way. And on the marketing effort, we are in the midst, about halfway through, yeah, a little over halfway through the recruiting period for our new marketing coordinator. We've had extraordinary interest in this position, and I've been very, very impressed with what we've seen so far. The position closes June 1, and our goal is to have that position filled as close and have the position filled in June and have that person here as close to July 1 as possible because we have lots for them to do. Outside of that, we're glad that Jim likes to take some more plates, and we're, you know, we're now trying to figure out how to send more his way if he's not paying attention. So, that's our report from Community Relations and Marketing, and be happy to answer any questions if you've got some.
Questions for Mark? Seeing none? Or Judy?
Just an observation, Mark. I think in the, one of the more recent Business Journal magazines, there was a listing of colleges and universities, which included community colleges as well as four-year schools. I don't know if you saw that, but part of the listing showed both the tuition that's charged and the number of students, and we were pretty high in numbers and not as high in tuition.
We are the best deal around. We really are. And part of our marketing efforts for fall will be to target some of our neighbors to the east who don't have the good fortune to live in this state, due to no fault of their own, we assume, and to help them see the light of really what a good deal we are. We'll try not to make them too feel, too badly about living on that side of the border, but we'd be happy to welcome them back over here, so.
Other questions? Mark, thank you. Next up, College President Report, Priscilla.
Thank you, Chairman Arman, and members of the Board. Vice President Perez mentioned the Community College Career Training Grant application, which is one of the biggest things we've done in a long time, although it followed hard on the heels of the submission of a Title III grant that was a $2.5 million grant proposal focused on outreach centers and e-learning and e-services. I want to say another couple of words about what I call the T3C grant. This Community College Training Grant is under the Department of Labor, and every state last round, there's $2.5 billion awarded, well, appropriated by the federal government to be awarded in $500 million packages over five years, four or five years, something like that. Last round, we were part of a consortium that received about $2.5 million for the whole state of Idaho, ISU, CSI, CWI, and NIC. And our portion of it was the Physical Therapist Assistant Program. We are the umbrella program for the other three colleges involved. That was about $670,000, $650,000. This is the second round for that C3T grant funding. We are the only college applying for an individual grant in Idaho, only college in Idaho applying for an individual grant, excuse me. The rules, if you will, for this particular round of awards stipulate that each state will get one individual award for a minimum of 200, or 2.5 million. We are the only ones that are applying for an individual grant in Washington unless somebody slips in something tomorrow, I mean Idaho, I was listening to Mark too much, unless somebody slips something in tomorrow unbeknownst to us. And actually, I think we're about the only college that's eligible to apply for it. So, we have high hopes that we will be awarded the almost $3 million. Now, there are always, when you're dealing with the federal government glitches, so nothing's, you know, a sure thing. But this is a game changer for North Idaho College. It really is a game changer for the college, and it's a game changer for the region. Jim mentioned 300 or 400 jobs, but he's talking pretty local. In North Idaho itself, we are looking at upwards of 1,200 new jobs, high-paying jobs, for people who now will be able to get that composite training and non-destructive testing training in North Idaho rather than having to go to California and Seattle and other places where they currently have to go. The aviation industry is solidly behind this, and it's amazing how many firms there are out there that you just don't even know about. They're small mom-and-pop firms. So, we've got a tremendous amount of support. We have letters from the governor. We have letters from Maria Cantwell and Kathy McMorris Rogers from the Washington delegation, from both of our senators, Crepo and Rish, and from our two congressmen, Congressman Labador, first one he's ever written for any project, I believe, and Congressman Simpson. So, it's very exciting, and it will be a center for aviation excellence that we will all be proud of and will be really using to support the economic development of this community and economic vitality for decades. The other grant we got today, Sarah Flatlin has been very busy. She just got news today that we were awarded almost $29,000 from the Department of Parks and Recreation to build the gangway, if you will, to the dock, which is really important. We're very excited about that. I know Gary and his crew are really excited about that. So, that's two good things in today that Sarah is feeling very good about, and a lot of other people on campus as well. Ron mentioned the Sandpoint Center. Just wanted to say briefly, I am meeting tomorrow morning with the heads of several of the art groups in Sandpoint to talk about how the college and the community groups can collaborate on the visual and performance art, performing arts in that area. Also, wanted to highlight the meeting I had with Tim Mason from the Department of Public Works when Ron and Jim and I were in Boise last week. Tony Fernandez and Dwayne Nellis and I presented to Tim Mason our idea to scale down the joint-use building to 12 million from 22 million or 21 million, from about 75,000 or so square feet to 45,000 square feet. We are asking DPW in FY14 to set aside $4 million for the three colleges, and in FY15 to set, to award another $4 million for the three colleges. And then, we're pledging to come to the table with another $4 million to round out the 12 million. This does really shrink the footprint for construction, so each of the three institutions would have 15,000 square feet, but it will make it doable. And Tim actually seemed enthusiastic about it and very encouraging about this. So, we will be going forward with that new approach. UI, I'll just make sure you know this, I think you do already, but in case you don't, UI will not have it as its number-one priority. They will have their science building as their number-one priority. But Tim suggested to University of Idaho that they bold and underline their second priority and speak very positively about it at the Permanent Building Fund Council meeting in October. So, I'm cautiously hopeful about that. And then, also, I wanted to mention, finally, Jim mentioned the entrepreneurial program. We had overlapping reports, I won't say anything else about that, but the hiring committees that were alluded to earlier, we do have the Executive Director for HR Hiring Committee up and running. Sarah Garcia is chairing that, and we have a very tight timeline in place for that position. Towards the end of June, when we know how good the candidate pool for that position is, we'll go out with the Assistant Director of HR position. Want to thank Ron Dorn for chairing the Vice President for Student Services Committee, Search Committee, and Mark is chairing the Vice President for Instruction Search Committee. So, thanks to Sarah and Mark and Ron. So, we're getting this going. That's my report. That's my report.
Questions for Priscilla?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Christie.
Well, Dr. Bell, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but working on this major aerospace, aerospace grant, wasn't this part of your mission when you went back to DC and you met with our delegation?
Yes.
I think that really illustrates and certainly kudos to you because you have always kept those national connections on behalf of this college. You have always made sure that someone attended the, the summit day on the hill and you've always gone when you could, and this year I think you went with Mark. And I think I would just like board for us to always keep in mind how important it is to reach out to our national delegation as well as our, our state delegation and great work. Good job.
We're very excited about this grant, very, very excited.
So let me ask you, if we get this grant, how much of it will be done online?
Well, it is an open entry, open exit. The, the thing about this grant is it, it takes us outside the box. People will be registering at all sorts of times. They will have to have financial aid awards that are not based on a, a normal semester start, stop date. We had to estimate, you know, we have to have a certain number of seat hours though still for, you know, financial aid and Veterans Affairs and, and one of the main focus, uh, population is veterans. Um, we will have some online, we will have a lot in place. We are looking, we'll have to do facilities. Uh, we're looking at facility op, options now. The, uh, um, Unit Tech and Empire Airlines have suggested they might have some space available. We also, speaking of that, will, uh, when we get this grant, our next step will be to go to the EDA, the Economic Development Agency, to work with them to get an infrastructure grant of five hundred thousand dollars if we need infrastructure and upwards of three million dollars for construction to, it has to be matched, but to, um, give us seed money for developing, for building a facility for the aviation program, which could be on the prairie. And I met with the EDA folks, Mark and I both did, when we were in DC last time, and they're very enthusiastic about this because they like to invest in projects that are tied to an emerging sector of the economy. They won't help us build an expanded welding facility, but something that's tied to an emerging sector is what they're all about. So she was very encouraging about that as well.
That's great.
So there would possibly be some matching cost there down the road?
Yes, I mean, if we got three million from EDA, we'd have to come up with three million. And, and truthfully, to build an aviation center, you're probably going to have to come up with a little more than that, too. Uh, but it could accommodate. The, the good thing about it is that this aviation program will also, it, it's aerospace manufacturing, aviation maintenance. It will also give us the opportunity to expand, you know, our machining program, for example. I mean, because that's a huge component of this particular program. So it will benefit our existing trades and industry programs as well, some of them. Yeah.
So, um, President Bell, that could possibly down the road be a, a capital fund project?
Yes.
That we might ask our dear friends to help us with?
Yes.
Oh, great.
Other questions for Dr. Bell? Seeing none, we will move on to old business. Old Business, Tab One. Uh, we're starting second readings on the two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen budget.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Christie.
I started to make a motion and, um, then we went into general session, which was the certainly best procedure, but I'd like to revisit the idea of making a motion on Tab One. I, I really would like to suggest that we take another look at this, not a long look because we, we know that we have, uh, we need to get this wrapped up so our students can move forward and our administration and faculty and staff. I would like to suggest, I'm making a motion right now, that we take a little more time to look at the numbers. We have some more numbers tonight that have been given to us and possibly set another date down the road. I'm thinking we have a retreat date coming up on June fifteenth. If we could, uh, squeeze out some time before the retreat for a special board meeting and maybe at that time set our budget.
Is there a second to this motion? So we have a second, uh, we have a motion and a second, not a second. We have a motion and a second to delay the approval of the budget from now until the special board meeting that would possibly be held on June fifteenth, is that correct?
Correct.
Discussion.
I, I take it that the motion, uh, encompasses Tab One, Two, Three, Four, Five, and Six?
Yes, thank you.
Right, not just Tab One?
That's correct, thank you.
In thinking about the motion, uh, I have two thoughts. One is, we did during the workshop, we were looking at some of our numbers that we're going to get through more processing. Uh, are there any more things the board would like to have from our staff? I think one that I mentioned was, as we try and figure out the capital budget items that are coming along, we all agree there was a long list, but it's probably time to have that as part of what we're looking at for how we're going to allocate, um, one-time money that, that we've had described as some from the urban renewal rebate that we already know is happening, then some guestimates from the staff on what surplus there might be, and some leftover money. I think those are the three categories we talked about earlier. There may be others, I don't know, but I was thinking the one that we had listed here was, um, capital projects coming up. Uh, and I know we have the list, but probably adding it to our discussion next time would be helpful to me as to when those capital projects are coming up. Uh, Dr. Bell just described some from, uh, we're talking to the state to help us, but we've also seen the history of the state is probably not going to help us as much, therefore we need to get ready for what we want to get done. So that would be part of, uh, my discussion of, this is like a Christmas tree motion where we hang all these things on it along the way.
Christie Meyer, I, I would, uh, be happy to assure that the board will have, um, a list of the projects that we are looking at, the needed projects, the needed capital, uh, deferred maintenance, um, plant projects, so that you'll have that for reference. And we do have the one-time.
Well, I think it goes beyond that. I think it's even, I mean, it's a little bit like this aeronautics program. If we get the grant, then there's a possible, we're going to have to have matching funds for that. I think, you know, those are the kinds of things we, that are somewhat unknown out there. Uh, another unknown is with our PTE programs, if in fact we are going to really relocate four PTE programs in the next fiscal year, what's the cost and how are we going to absorb those? So I, I think there's a lot of pieces, it's not just the DPW types of, of requests we're going to make, which are typically not budgeted. I think, I think there are internal budget types of requests that we're going to need to look at in the next year or two or three that we really need to get our hands around, um, so that we can start to get a feel for the, the magnitude of those because we know we, we set aside some, set aside some funds on an annual basis, but it's not going to be enough to absorb the, the, the projects we have coming up, it appears.
That would come about from the report we heard on K-Tech and some of the growth that it's gotten bigger every time we hear a report. And that's going to eventually, hopefully soon, implicate and impact what we're doing. Uh, and we have to be careful, this gets so, such a big project and yet budgeting isn't year by year. It needs to be that big picture look that, that's, uh, helpful for me to have some of those numbers.
And it gives us a chance to start planning longer term, too. I think that's a bigger question here, instead of trying to plan, you know, the long-term based upon this year's budget. Any other discussion?
I, while we're still in, in, uh, session here talking about this, because the next meeting may be a bit shorter and I don't know how much is televised, I'd like to hear from our, our president on your observations about what you think the budget, how it should be done, and we'll add that to all the other ideas we have, but it's a chance to hear from our president. Is this his okay time, Mr. Chair?
Absolutely. It's a discussion.
Christie Meyer, um, I appreciate your, your asking the question. I, I truly believe that the budget proposal we've given to the board for fiscal year thirteen is well thought out, um, and reflects the most important needs that have come forward through the budget process. Uh, it doesn't by any means incorporate all of the needs that have come forward. We have, you know, pushing one and a half to two million dollars of, of additional needs that we have not prioritized into this budget.
How many?
One and a half to two million. Um, that is always going to be the case, it seems like, when you're dealing with college budgets, because there's no end to the things that we would like to do to make the experience better for students and, and create and enhance learning opportunities. That said, um, I think we've been judicious in ranking those, uh, requests and prioritizing them and in including the ones that we felt, uh, we could reasonably afford, uh, in fiscal year thirteen. Um, some of those requests are new positions, some are ongoing maintenance and operations, some of course are, are a result of, uh, inflationary costs for leases and, uh, contractual obligations. Um, this budget that we presented with a three percent tuition increase and two percent property tax increase is balanced. Um, I believe that it's, it's the budget that we ought to adopt in terms of both the expenditure and the revenue to support the expenditures. I do have, as I said in the, the workshop earlier, uh, severe, serious reservations about using one-time money to fund ongoing operating costs for the college. And we've already established that, that the expenditure level is going to stay the same. The question is over how we are going to pay for that, and I really believe that we will be digging ourselves into a hole if we use one-time money to pay for ongoing operating costs next year. There are many, many one-time expenses that we need to consider, and I think that's what we ought to look at using that one-time money for. I, including, by the way, uh, getting reserves compiled for capital projects.
Any other discussion on the motion? Okay, so, so we have a motion to, uh, basically table old business, Tab One, Two, Three, Four, Five, and Six, which is the second reading on the, um, College Platton Fund Operating Budget, Service Units Budget, Fee-Based Activities Budget, Grants Budget for two thousand and thirteen, and the Total Institutional Budget, and then also Tuition and Fees for two thousand and thirteen, to table those second readings until a special meeting to be determined sometime on June fifteenth. Did I read that correct? Judy?
I want to speak one more time so the board has time to think about the importance, I think, of, of what our president just said and what we heard today during our board meeting of all the things that are coming along, uh, not only just capital things with some of the programs, uh, and that one-time money at least in our household is only used one time and can't be folded into whatever else we want to do. It was helpful today to have the scenarios that, that Ron, you gave us for tuition at three percent, uh, property taxes and the variations of that. And I would like our board to look at the poss, the reality of probably doing a tuition increase of three percent, property tax of three percent, because I think both the students, we heard Mark and commented today that our price is about the best around, and I do want to continue to have it the best, but I think the value we provide is worth a three percent increase in tuition for students and a three percent increase for property tax holders so that we do not get behind, which we've had happen before, because we know how much is coming ahead and we want to be the best. So I had to put the plea in while you're thinking in anticipation of great wisdom and agreement when we meet next.
Any other comments before we vote?
I'm very tempted to engage in more conversation about, um, the increases, but I'm not going to, I'm going to wait until the next meeting.
That's understandable. All in favor of tabling, uh, these readings and second readings until June fifteenth? Say aye.
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 The six second readings are now scheduled for second reading on June fifteenth. Moving on to new business, Tab Seven, First Reading Staff Sabbatical Policy, Alex Harris. Alex, you had no idea you'd be on this soon, did you? You thought you were going to be able to get a nap before you started.
Well, I think you have in front of you the draft policy for staff sabbatical. Um, you've heard a couple of people speak to it tonight, and so I'll, I'll keep mine short. Um, but basically this has been in the works for almost three years. When I started on Staff Assembly Executive Committee as Vice Chair, we first started this discussion and, uh, with the help of Priscilla, um, really showing us how, how it would be of value to the college, um, we began work and seeing what other colleges were doing for staff sabbaticals. Um, worked on it quite intensively about two years ago and then, um, kind of held back for a while. Um, when we saw the long-range, uh, visioning and planning process happen on campus and our mission and vision values brought to the board, um, especially the value of educational excellence, which, which reads "High Academic Standards, Passionate and Skillful Instruction, Professional Development, and Innovative Programming While Continuously Improving All Services and Outcomes," and we felt like this was the time to bring it forward because, uh, to support those mission and vision and values, um, that our community and our staff, our faculty and our students and you worked so hard to come up with, um, this, we feel that this staff sabbatical policy really fits that.
Questions for Alex?
Alex, um, fortunately, when I look at things like this, I start looking at it through the eyes of a lawyer, so, um, the purposes for which the sabbatical leave can be granted, Part A, indicates that professional sabbatical activities may include but will not be limited to the following. If it's to include but will not be limited to, then it really is an open door for anything. How do we control it?
Well, I, I will say that they have been, uh, this, this policy and procedures have been taken to the skillful eye of our attorneys also, and they have looked at that. The process that's set up for this, and I think some of the other people that have been involved could speak to it, um, has really set forth that this policy is just to, for the board to acknowledge that it's possible to take a staff sabbatical. When we look into the procedures on how these take, th- there's a very intentional process for which someone could apply for sabbatical, um, through their manager and through their VP to President's Cabinet and ultimately to the president, to see that if it's possible to do that, whether it's, there's a financial effect on that or whether it's something that, um, ties to the mission, vision, and values of the college. So there's many checks and balances within that. The, the policy itself is, is just addressing the fact that it can make those, um, sabbaticals possible. I don't know if anyone else wants to speak to that, but...
The question that I raise, quite frankly, is it really is a discretionary, totally discretionary, um, granting of, of a significant right. And it's, um, it really isn't limited by anything here. It would be nice if that we knew, you know, what, what categories of endeavor, uh, the sabbatical is to be used for, and this, I think, tried to do that, uh, but then took it away when it said not limited to. So I guess I'm a little concerned about that. The other thing is that under Part D, the last sentence says, and this is with regard to, um, employment during sabbatical leave, it says, "exceptions to this restriction will be granted in the discretion of the president," which is again, a policy that then becomes no policy because it's left to the discretion of an individual without having necessarily to live up to a specific policy or guideline. And I understand, you know, the difficulty in putting these things together, believe me, drafting these things, um, is a nightmare. But those two, um, open-ended aspects of it, quite frankly, give me some concern. And the other thing that I didn't see in here, maybe because I didn't, I didn't read it closely enough, maybe, um, but who approves ultimately the sabbaticals?
Uh, in, uh, do you guys have the procedure in front of you?
I do, I am, and I was not able to find it. I don't know if it's the president ultimately approves them, or does it come before the board for approval?
The faculty's does.
Pardon?
The faculty does. Procedure has it going to the president?
I see what it goes to.
Yeah, see, I see the, I see the faculty.
Sabbatical Leave Committee appointed by the president's cabinet.
Yeah, that talks about, um, applications being rated by the Sabbatical Leave Committee according to some of these guidelines, but it doesn't say who ultimately approves it. And so I don't know if it's left just up to the president or if it comes before the board as the faculty sabbaticals do. So I, I'm a little concerned about the lack of some direction about the ultimate approval of the sabbaticals. And I, and I thought I'd mention that because those are the three things, as I look through it, that I, 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 I quite frankly, uh, they concern me.
I know that...
That the policy stipulates that it's the... The policy stipulates that it's the President. It's not in the procedures and the policy.
Could you show me where that's at in here?
It's the last line under intent.
Under what?
Under intent.
What?
First section of the policy. Trustee Howard, the first section.
Oh, I see.
The last sentence of that first section says, "The decision to authorize sabbatical leaves and determination of the number is within the sole and absolute discretion of the NIC President."
And thank you for that clarification. I guess that just shifts my concern over to wanting to treat the staff the same way you treat the faculty. Why would the faculty need to come before the board, but the staff not need to? I don't understand.
I'm trying to think back through the whole entire process of writing this over the last three years, and by no means is it my policy and procedure at all. I guess I can speak to my involvement in that and how we came about it. We looked at many different campuses that have staff sabbatical policies. We looked at the nature of staff sabbaticals and how they're different from faculty sabbaticals. One of the things that you'll see in there is it's not, because faculty teach for a semester length and they would have to be replaced to teach that class. Staff sabbaticals, depending on which department you're in, the timing of those could be different. Also, they're first, they could be for significantly less time than a full semester. You know, six weeks would be, I think, the minimum we put in there. I'm trying to think back without going through there. And that, the process is set forth differently than the faculty in the details, and that's when a person, for example, if I wanted to take a sabbatical to research the, how a joint-use building works at other campuses and headquarters, stuff like that, I would put together a proposal that put about the length of time that it would take, what do I do to visit, the cost of that, if it would cost at all, and then submit that to my supervisor, who would then be able to say, "Well, we can't do this within our department right now." And then it would move on, if it was approved by that, to then the sabbatical committee that's appointed to kind of rate how many of these are out there and how it's set in those, in the procedure, to relate it to the specific mission, vision, and values of the college and how that fits to it. And we felt that speaking to the mission, vision, and values and adding those steps in the process that aren't in the faculty sabbatical policy, and I don't know how long ago the faculty sabbatical's been written, but it's been around a long time, that we felt like we were getting buy-in along the way and that ultimately that discussion would happen in President's Cabinet with the President having the ultimate decision. Why we, if we consciously made the decision not to bring it in front of the board, I don't think we did. I think it was what we took from other institutions, ran in front of our legal representation and kind of settled on within discussions with faculty, staff, administration, and all the people involved in that.
Thank you. First to you.
Your legal representation, is that Mr. Lyons?
Yeah.
He's our legal, hey, what are you doing? No, I'm just curious. Because Mr. Lyons, you know the faculty sabbatical policy quite well.
Well, yes, I have been involved in the faculty sabbatical policy. Actually, my office really hasn't had much involvement with this. The way I see this is it is primarily an issue of policy with the board, not so much of legal issues. And then fallout from the policy determination the board may make on this may be some drafting issues, so.
Well, I, first of all, I think that this board has proven time and time again that we truly believe in sabbaticals, we support sabbaticals, and we support professional development. But I guess I would share just the concern of Mr. Howard of, it'd be nice to have them consistent, where either they both went to the President or they both went to the board, not two different things. And when I look at the length of sabbatical leave, I mean, the maximum is two full semesters, so that would compare with faculty. So that's the only thing that I'd like to see cleaned up. Whether the board agrees it should come directly to us or to the President, we can work on that, but there should be consistency.
Trustee Wood, with respect to the statement under length of time for sabbaticals, the thirty-six weeks parentheses, two full semesters, it was an attempt to try to equate it somewhat to the faculty sabbatical, but it may not be thirty-six consecutive weeks. And so it is, you know, that's, faculty take their sabbaticals in a semester timeframe. Staff sabbaticals may be four weeks now and four weeks then, and, you know, I mean, it's because they could be going to a month-long training session somewhere that has steps to it. And so this wasn't an attempt to say it's going to be a minimum time of one semester and a maximum of two, but we do have maximum weeks on it and minimum weeks.
Okay.
So that is, that's the reason for that. You know, with respect to who's the ultimate approving authority, I suppose it goes to what was discussed at some point earlier about, you know, is the board really the one to be approving sabbaticals? Or is that something that probably ought to be delegated to some other things that you talked about at another time? So I don't think any, any of the staff or the administration, President's Cabinet, for example, if we do feed this, have a lot of ownership in exactly who approves it. I think that's, you know, that's why it's in the policy, for the board to look at the policy rather than in the procedure. The policy is the one that the board approves, and if you do not want that language, then it's certainly the board's purview to say this is, that policy is fine, but just take that last sentence, say it's within the sole absolute discretion of the board. Or if you want to just make sure that that's delegated to the President, then even if it is.
Sorry. One of the things I would say, I would say two points on that. One is the issue, yes, of ultimately responsibility for approving that. If the board wants that, by all means, then we would definitely, could definitely change it. But I think that, to speak to what Trustee Wood was talking about, and we often struggle with this, and now that I've been involved in our participatory governance for three or four years, is we struggle in being separate or lumped together with faculty and staff, and the needs of faculty and staff are often so different. And if you have that fifty-thousand-foot view, we're all kind of the same. But when you really talk about what happens day-to-day and what happens with training and the changing needs that we have for our staff compared to what faculty needs are in the classroom and how sabbaticals relate to the classroom and what they teach, but for staff, there's such a wide range of things. Everything from some of Gary's staff maybe getting safety certifications on a sabbatical to someone, you know, like I talked about researching joint-use buildings, to all those things. That, the other part of, with faculty sabbaticals, is they have one represent, one person, Dr. Perez, their VP, and that's who the faculty sabbaticals go to. And then the VP makes a recommendation to you guys to go ahead and approve those, that they give their stamp. Well, with staff, we all report to one of, any of the VPs, and so it creates a conundrum so that...
Or one of the directors.
Right. Well, yeah, ultimately to one of the VPs, but to many different directors, to many different managers, to assistant directors, to, everyone in PC has at least a staff member that reports to them. So it creates a different kind of setup. So we didn't think that you could just apply what it is with faculty for staff, and that's why there was a difference.
And that makes sense. Again, we certainly support professional development. But I think the issue for the board, and I could be the only one that is thinking this, is that sabbaticals ultimately need to be approved budget-wise. And I think that's where we come in, is what is the cost of the sabbatical? And we really do need to approve that. And so I'm not sure how, what, where to go from here. It's only first reading, so we have some time. But I wouldn't want you to think that we don't support sabbaticals in theory, because we certainly do.
Trustee Wood, if I might respond to the budget question. If there is a financial impact for the fiscal year in question, it will be in the budget and it will be subject to board approval. And that is a given. There will be, I foresee, a number of faculty sabbatical requests that have no fiscal impact. We will, we will figure out a way within the existing budget, just as, you know, we sometimes do when somebody leaves on maternity or something like that, to handle the responsibilities under the current budget. And so not all of them will have, faculty, faculty sabbaticals are almost always going to have some financial impact. It's not going to be true that staff sabbaticals will always have financial impact.
That's a good distinction for us to know.
Ken.
Am I incorrect that, quite frankly, our procedure so far in approving budgets has not been to do a line item restriction? We don't go through and strike out particular items that you put in there. And so what we try and do is look at what, the way you've divided it up, the budget, how you've allocated it. If it makes overall sense in terms of the overall expenditures and then the revenues, then that's what we approve, not the individual items. So any control we may have over the fiscal impact of any kind of sabbatical really is over, only within the gross amount of the budget, not within individual budget items, I don't think.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good point. So unless the board was to request that the sabbatical costs be...
Line itemed.
Line itemed, you would, yeah, you would not normally see that. That's true, Trustee.
Well, one of the things I was thinking is, do we have, we have a training budget now.
We have a training budget.
So, I mean, we could, we could probably have a sabbatical budget so that there would be a request towards that for funding.
We spent a lot of time initially talking about the impact on budgets that this would have and should we tie certain things in the policy and procedure to budget? And are we limiting ourselves by doing that? Or do we help ourselves through doing that? And I think what we settled on was the fact that when we built into the procedure that each person requesting a sabbatical had to go through a process which their immediate supervisor and/or budget officer in that area uses their professional judgment to see if it fits within their budget for their area that year. And that, and the approval to even get to the next level is predicated on the fact that their manager, who oversees their budget, sees if it works within there or not. We talked a lot about what Dr. Bell just said, and that's, we foresee most of these being cost-neutral in that it would, it would have a workload adjustment for other people in the office. But necessarily, like when faculty takes us to battle, you have to hire someone to teach those credits. When staff do that, we would be able to not do that. Now, we have our professional development funds, which are separate, which we talked about. We wouldn't limit people to apply for those funds, to use those for sabbatical if they needed funds to do that. So we struggled a lot and discussed that a lot, but we felt like if the individual budget managers approved that, then it was saying they could work within their budget to do that.
Judy.
Just thinking with you on reinforcing the idea that the sabbatical makes sense and we want to make it work. Have you had occasion to visit with any other institutions who've done this to learn how it's worked or not worked for staff to have sabbaticals?
We had discussions three years ago when we started this with some of the colleges. I think Dr. Bell spoke best to it because she's been at another institution and also been a benefactor of a staff sabbatical.
Very true, very true. Every college where I've worked full-time, which would be Tacoma and Highline and Fulton Montgomery, has a sabbatical policy for staff. And yes, Alex is right, I benefited from the policy at Tacoma Community College. I earned my PhD while I was on sabbatical. I'm not the whole time on sabbatical, but I had about nine months on sabbatical.
As a staff member?
As a staff member, yeah. I was an assistant dean of students at the time. That is pretty normal. Now, that did have a bit of a fiscal impact for the college because of the length of time of the sabbatical. But it's very, very common for colleges to have sabbaticals for staff as well as for faculty. They are, but it's a different animal. It's a little different animal, but it's very common and utilized, you know, I think, in my experience, been utilized very effectively and professionally to advance the mission of the college and services for students.
Then, for me at least, that all makes sense. And now the conundrum of we want everybody to be the same and yet they're different. So how do we balance that? Was how did the approval system work in some of the other schools?
The President approved at the colleges where I was, but the President also approved faculty sabbaticals. I mean, I've never been at a college where the faculty sabbaticals went to the board.
And as far as how they're rated, in a lot of them that we looked at, there was a rating system that somehow tied it with accreditation or mission, vision, and values or whatever the, you know, the topic du jour of the college at that time was. And so that's why we really tied it with that because of our long-range visioning and planning process rolls into mission and vision and values, which is now tied to our accreditation plan and all that. So it ensures that there's those checks and balances within because the rubric of rating these will be tied directly to those things.
Mr. Chair. Well, Alex, you've done a good job of explaining that it's not apples to apples. And I appreciate that. You've lessened my concerns completely. With no fiscal impact most of the time, it does take away that concern that it needs to come to the board. But this is just first reading, so I guess we'll have opportunity for more discussion.
Any other questions for Alex? Just Judy.
Since it's first reading, is there something different we want to have happen before we see it a second time? Or are we there? Because what's going to change between now and then? And you had some heartburn, Ken, with...
I do. Still do.
Okay, and I'm trying to think, what do we do with it now?
Well, I mean, my difficulty is the language that I pointed out in my comments. I do not understand why in part A, these sabbatical activities be included but will not be limited to the following. The five, the four areas that are laid out seem like excellent bases for sabbaticals. If you can think of other excellent bases for sabbaticals, then they ought to be added here. And, but to leave it wide open makes it so discretionary that there are no limits. And I'm not, you know, you know, when you put these things together, you're not looking at individuals because everybody's that's put this together has got their heart in the right place and it's the guidance to the future, in the future. You know, some other individual may look at it and read it differently at some point in time. And so it's got to be, I think, something that has some teeth to it. And quite frankly, that not limited to gives me a lot of difficulty. And if, so if, between now and the second reading, if there was some review of, should there be additional bases added to these four-point, four sabbaticals, then let's put them in. But I'd like to take out the but-not-limited-to. I have still some difficulty with the exceptions to the restrictions under four unemployment that will be granted at the discretion of the President, but I quite frankly have less difficulty with that because I think that there may be things that we just can't even envision that will come up, that are going to need the attention of the President and the individual that shouldn't have to go through some kind of a process. So I'm less concerned about that than I am about the guidelines for the fundamental, fundamental bases for granting the sabbatical.
Ken, let me ask you this. I guess I'm trying to figure out a way to get to the next level here. I would almost recommend that we not list any items, more so, and leave it somewhat wide open. I guess personally, I don't have a problem with the but-not-limited-to the following. But I guess what you're doing is you're listing what you can think of right now with the unknown of what could be. I mean, that's subject to change. And you don't want to be coming in with a very, very good, you know, request and then go, oh, geez, it's not one of the four. So I would almost recommend that we not list the four and give yourself some more freedom away from that.
Mr. Chair, could it say just in line with the mission of the college?
Well, I mean, I guess my second part of that is, and that's possible, but the second part of that is, is the process that you're going to use to get to approval really takes away that rogue staff member that's going to, you know, step up and try to do something that's way out of bounds and get approval. Now, who knows, but, you know, I guess we could have an institution somewhere down the line where everybody's rogue, so hopefully not.
If everybody's rogue, then it's not really rogue.
Chairman Arman.
Good point.
Yeah, Chairman Arman, the board actually approves the policy and not the procedure, though I'm happy to take the suggestions and we work procedure. One thing that we could do is just spend a little more time with Mark on the procedure and see if we can come up with a little bit better language that might satisfy everybody. I don't know. I don't know if that's possible. But you're exactly right, Chairman Arman, in that we, we're not sure we can envision every example of a worthwhile sabbatical request, one that has merit and would bring value to the college. I think there are many things that will come up over time that, you know, maybe don't have a certificate attached. have a certificate attached to it, but might be extremely valuable in terms of an experiential learning for somebody in, in Steve Rupel's area. We just don't know and especially we don't know when we, you think how fast the world is changing and how fast technology changes and how technology changes impact our own working environment and that, I, we just, we just didn't think we could think of a ball.
Why do we do this? This is second reading, excuse me, go ahead, Ron.
Could this just changing one word fix us for you, Ken? Or it says professional sabbatical activities instead of may include, shall include, but will not be limited to the following?
It's the not limited to that troubles me because that's the one that opens the door to everything. I mean, when, when I look at something like this, the procedure I think is designed to give guidance to people in, in applying whatever you're doing. To take out those four takes out all the guidance.
I agree.
And I don't, I, I really, I really don't agree with that, but.
Well, it wouldn't be taking out the four. It actually, it says shall include. In other words, that it requires those four, but would not be limited to those four.
Right, I, I was responding to Mick's suggestion, take them out.
Well, let's do this, this is, okay, here's where we're at on this. We've got the draft policy in front of us. Second reading's coming up a month from now. The procedure is something that we can work on. We don't have to approve procedure anyway. Why don't we just, you know, take a look at, at the policy when it comes up? And we've, we've given the comments now to Alex and the rest of the staff, Assembly to take a look at this and if, you know, they can probably look at the procedure. And if there's some wordsmithing that needs to be done, let them come back to us in, in, in June.
Good. I just think that if there's any wordsmithing, if we could just get some direction specifically to those, and I think trustee Howard provided that with the not limited to, so we could definitely take a look at it. The one thing is we don't have any senate meetings or anything and this has been run through senate. But I think just as if, when we ran it through senate, they approved for the first reading with possible amendments and we were sent away back to do that and that, that was through the senate. So I, I don't know if there's anything procedurally we would get in trouble for, but we would definitely run those changes by the representatives that we have on campus. I mean, because I think ultimately it's important to get it through there.
Yeah, I'd like to get it approved.
But Dr. Bell did bring up an important point, that we don't approve procedure, so I don't know that we can even ask them to go back. We can give them some.
We can give them guidance.
Guidance, but.
Yeah, we approve policy.
We look at only at policy.
And I, I will take the suggestions and I will ask Mark to help me look at the wording there. Our attorney, Mark, did actually review this, but it's been a little while. You did. It was, it was more than.
Two, two and a half years.
It was more than a year ago.
Two and a half years ago?
No, 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 no. It was a year and a half ago, a year and a half ago. And, and part of that.
I just don't remember any.
You, you pay particular attention to the other employment during sabbatical leave. I think more so than, than the first section on purposes. So we'll, we'll sit down with, with Mark Lyons as well.
Perfect.
And I, my hope is as a board member, we can, can in the second meeting have it happen the next board meeting and keep it going. The idea that procedure really isn't our bailiwick, right, next regular board meeting, that's right. I do think it's important and I see it is identified in Section G, obligation of recipients of the sabbatical. You're welcome to get it and you come back, you have to come back to the college and you have to do, to work here a while or you repay the money. So there's a real, I think, definition of what's going to, expected to happen. And if we have a policy that says, yep, we agree with the need for staff to have a sabbatical, we're pretty close to being there.
Okay, we will have second reading in June. Thank you, Alex. Number tab eight, first reading on the board meeting schedule for twenty twelve, twenty thirteen. Dr. Bell.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Chairman Arman, I, you caught me a bit flat-footed there for a moment. This is the normal time of year when the board looks at the proposed calendar for fiscal year twelve or for the succeeding fiscal year. Our very capable and excellent executive assistant and secretary of the board, in, in that part of it anyway, Shannon Goodrich, has gone through the calendars. She's also looked at ACCT calendars and AACC calendars and the fly-in calendar and the JFAK week calendars to the extent possible and shifted some dates if necessary. And this is our best guess at a schedule of board meetings that would not conflict with the national meetings that you have to attend to and with the state meetings that we have to deal with.
As long as it's July two thousand and twelve, not two thousand and eleven.
That was my question.
Oh.
That's twelve, was this twelve coming up?
Shannon, Shannon is doing excellent work and part of the excellent work is to make sure that you all stay on your toes.
Pick up on things.
Mission accomplished.
Yes, July twenty twelve. So you may, this is a first reading, you may choose to, to adopt it at this meeting or you may choose to adopt it at your June meeting for a second reading. That is your choice.
Well, it is the first reading, it is new business, so we will be having it as old business in second reading in, in June.
Mr. Chair, on, on the January meeting, thirteen, did we put a date in there or is that one of those that has to be determined? You know, we know, we're ahead for the fourth Wednesday, whatever it is. But because of the legislative issue, do we lock ourselves into a date?
We, I can always change it.
We have always.
So it reminds everybody it's about then, subject to, okay.
Okay, information items. Ron Dorn, the DPW schedule.
Board chair, board, board chair and board members, I think you probably have a copy, hopefully you have a copy of the, you don't, do you? DPW request that we're proposing to send in for fiscal year fourteen, you don't have that, do you?
I, I saw it because you and I and Judy.
Yeah. Well, we'll have to send one out to you. Let me at least explain the process we've gone through and I will send this out to you hopefully tomorrow. The DPW decision timeline is that June first, we submit this DPW request that you will get tomorrow to them for preliminary review. We get a chance to revise it then and we make a second submission for that on July first. And then it, it gets into their hopper and, and then we go to the meeting in October and, and make our request before the, before the commission. I really begin the discussion in February with facilities and we put together an initial list that has the capital projects on it, has the alterations and repairs and has ADA. This thing comes in three parts. And then the one that you'll get, there are seven capital projects on here, the first one being the joint use facility, second one being professional technical education facility and so on. And we look at the funding on those stretching from fiscal year fourteen through fiscal year nineteen. It's, it's a five-year window. The alterations, there are approximately eight items on that and they range from the high beam repair in Boswell Hall all the way to proxy card system, carpet replacement and parking lot overlays and, and ceiling and parking lots. We bring that to the, bring that to the president's cabinet usually in March and then from there that we try to prioritize that into the list that, that you, that you will get tomorrow and then again submitted in, submitted first in June and then again if we revise it in July. But I think this would be an important document for the board to have relative to the earlier conversation that we had, again, relative to the meeting we're going to have in June. This is, this is a good partial list of what we think are our future capital commitments there. And I think the second and third pages really are more in line with, in a lot of cases, deferred maintenance. Some that we'll get from the state and some is when you approve the budget, we have a deferred maintenance list. So those two can kind of work hand in hand, except the one that you approve is a smaller listing than what goes on this list here. So again, it was just information items you should have had a copy on. I apologize if you didn't get one, but we'll have somebody get that out to you tomorrow.
Any questions for Ron? Good question.
After tomorrow, we'll have questions.
That's right.
For the fifteen. Thank you.
Thanks, Ron. As far as reports go, on the board chair report, I just have a couple of things. First of all, we've talked a number of times about the Friday, June fifteenth meeting. We are actually having a board retreat that day, so that will be a official meeting. We will probably start at eight o'clock AM here for a board meeting to approve the budget or review the budget for, hopefully for approval and then adjourn to a board retreat for the rest of the afternoon to plan for the future. So looking forward to that. Obviously, you know, with graduation, the campus is a little more quiet now, at least with, with students or younger people, but there's still a lot of things going on on campus. As I was looking at the events calendar, obviously a lot of theater, there's a lot of sports camps, there's a lot of things going on on this campus. Many years ago, it seemed like it went to sleep in the summer and now it doesn't. I, I ride and run around here all the time and it's just always amazing to me to see how many people are on campus all the time now through the summer. So summer school will be starting and, and we're right back in the swing of things. So I don't have much more than that. Anybody else have any comments for the, go to the order? Seeing none, we are adjourned.